Jim, could you give a prayer and anybody want to do the pledge?
No.
Okay, let's go ahead and open this meeting. First of all, on behalf of the flag and prayer of Jim, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Our heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Thank thee for many blessings you've stolen since the day of our lives. And as we participate in this meeting, may everything said and done be according to your will and be a better one for this community. Now, ask a special blessing on tornado victims as they drop them in their ways. Ask that you be with each one of them. Now, ask us to go with this meeting for this thing, you mean?
First of all, I'd like to have our secretary called Rolle for the plan commission. Ling Freiburger.
Here.
Jim Day.
Here.
Scott Moblin.
Here.
Ashana Abson.
Here.
Adam For.
Here.
John Mishler.
Here.
And Jeff Sauer. Do we have enough for a quorum? We do. All right, thank you very much. On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome everyone to the March 5th meeting of the Washington County Plan Commission. Everyone who appeared before the plan commission is entitled to legal right of due process. Therefore, everyone present who wants to will be given a chance to speak. We will ask that when you are called upon to speak, that you will state your name and address for the record. For the agenda, we'll have old business, we'll have committee reports, subdivision, land use, new business. We've got a schedule for Chris DeWitt, Indiana land. And then at the end, we'll have a chance for the audience to make remarks or have questions at that particular time. We ask for three minutes of limitation for you to ask or address the plan commission. With that, old business, we have committee reports, subdivision. Jeff is the chair of that. Seeing he's not here right now, we'll move on to land use.
You want to prove the minutes first?
Uh?
You want to prove your minutes first?
Oh, yes. No, I get it myself. Minutes, 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 minutes. Minutes were written and sent to you by email. If you've had a chance to look at them, are there any additions or corrections to them?
I'll prove the minutes as presented.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Jim Day has made the motion and the floor has made the second. So, the discussion, seeing now, we'll take it to a vote. All in favor of the minutes as written, signified by the same line?
Aye.
All opposed, same, motion carried. Thank you very much, Jim. Subdivision, again, we're waiting on Jim. He's had a think of land use. We did have our meeting a couple of weeks ago, right Max?
Yes, sir.
I don't know what the particular date was then, in February, the 22nd or something like that. We met out at the extension office and we went through several things and comments. We went through about three different scenarios that Kerry presented out to us. Jim, Max, the ones that were there, if you want to chime in at any time, if you can. But we kind of come to, in the conclusion, we kind of like the site scoring system. Is that right, Max?
Yeah, I pretty well decided on to go with.
Yeah. The site scoring system is a mechanism that like for nearest, nearest number of feet from a non-farm residence would have a certain score, nearest public use area. Each one of these, if we were in better shape as far as where a combined feeding operation would be, you would score higher. And there was a minimum amount of points to be scored that you wouldn't have, that you would eat okay, you know, going ahead with a combined feeding operation. So, a lot of times, the person that planned on filling the facility would know if he had enough criteria or right specifications to be able to put the combined feeding operation. So, that's the reason we kind of looked at. And this is, if you wanted to look at something similar to this, it would be Rush County. Rush County usually has a similar system. We also talked about that we are going to have to address the certain things about the threshold. We know that we've got a lot of CFOs and CAFOs that are hitting underneath those numbers so they don't have to comply with an ID and permit. Currently, right now, with the commissioners ordinances, even the setbacks, no setback language is classified for CFO and CAO. We're seeing a large increase in our livestock happening with operations that are underneath those ID numbers. So, in the meantime, after that meeting, we decided that we needed to try to identify that, but we didn't want to be so stringent that everybody that just had horses or whatever would have to go through all this stuff. So, we've got to come up with some type of parameter in our board, and I would call it an animal feeding, an AFO. Since we've got CFOs and they, you know, all CFOs and all this stuff, and it can be an animal feeding operation. Now, how to engage that, if you do that by animal units, as the ID and permit process, it's done by numbers, but it's actually done by manure load that would come off of the pond. So, you know, if you stayed within that type of guidelines, we need to kind of come up with some numbers as far as what the manure load would be in correlation to maybe with some of that ID and regulation to come in. Right now, it's 600 hogs, I think 200 cattle, 300 cattle, 300 cattle, it's 30,000 chickens. But all those are based off of what the manure load off of those units would be. So, that's something we get to come up with, you know, as far as a good number. Now, the catch to it, is it 20,000? Is it 10,000? Is it 15,000? What's that magic number to accomplish what we want? And basically, what we're wanting is proper site placement facilities, you know?
Scott, do you know how many of them, one turkey house?
I have no idea.
Just one of those buildings?
Yeah, one turkey house.
You see, most of them have three, three in the operation.
Right. One's about as bad as three. I mean, if you're worried about site placement, then that's not your bottom number right there.
It is one building?
One, that one, at least, that one's.
That's probably what I do, whatever one turkey house would be.
Yeah. And you know, we've had Travis, we've had some inquiries as far as site, you know, with sites and looking at contracting and going on. And we've been staring at Rule 5, you know, and that type of stuff. But we've really been urging, and we don't have anything in teeth, we've been urging them to stay within their compliance of the setback, even though by definition, they don't fit them. But if they were to do expansion or anything of that part, they probably would step up in the criteria.
Of what they're on the books now, yeah?
Yeah. So, and then there was this discussion of, you know, and this is Kerry's philosophy in there, is that 750 feet is already on the books. Now, is that the right number? You know, but it's a number that's been publicized and out there already. To step back away from it would probably be difficult.
I would kind of want to see what that, you know, the map of what, that, you know, she's going to present that.
She is going to present that at the next meeting. She's going to present the map that shows the 750, and with the current facilities.
I mean, I personally wouldn't want to go over the 750, so I wouldn't agree with you. You know, that's my point.
Yeah.
Yeah, 750 is over 80 miles.
Right.
That's pretty fish. Yeah, it's 660 feet, you know, 80 miles.
Yeah. But I know, and you know, of course, we all know that that number comes from the landfills.
Right, which is not kind of, you know.
Yeah.
And we could argue about that all night, but anyway, Kerry's feelings was that it was a publicized number, that people have already abided by it, that it was probably a number that we shouldn't really challenge. Well, I called the state land use office and they pulled that, the lady that I talked to got out a, basically a form zoning ordinance and read, you know, read certain parts of it. That was just like, you know, the base, the basis of most of the comprehensive cookie type of zoning, you know, which I don't think that would be anything like that, which is a reference she runs down. And it, the number that they gave was 650.
650?
So, 750 is not that far from 650. That, that number is not just totally outlandish or anything like that. I mean, 650 is a, is basically a really common number according to the lady that I talked to. So, you know, I don't know, you know, I think, you know, 750 obviously is a little bit that, like you said, I definitely don't think it would be further slow, that's really what I'm believing for. Because, you know, Washington County's not, you know, it's got 50,000 people in it, but it's got a lot of people.
John, has the commissioners had any pushback on the 750? He went up. Or survive more of it? Well. I'm back on the scene. Also, I think a lot of people, I think, that's, I mean, it's, I don't know, it's so much.
Well, see, that's the thing with this scoring system. If they have like a green filter system, or they've got, you know, a dotted letter stories, those all gain you points, you know, so that you are in, your credibility of your operation or reliability of you being scored to be accepted in there, those are a lot of facts.
And also, if you live in the rent area, or if it was within someone?
Yeah, right. The one thing with, where the younger operator lived on a, on a property, by the, where the closest to the operation, too. So, anything else, Jim, you want to add, or you want me to add something there? Tom, do you have?
Just curious. What would be the logic behind going from head count to manure damage? Because I guess I'm just thinking about ease of measuring and enforcement.
That head count is only people.
Right. There's an equation on how much a manure that a poultry and a layer produces, you know, in manure, or a duck that's in a pond system, you know, produces with all kinds. And each one of them has got a certain multiplier effect as far as manure load. So, the easiest way, the most powerful way, rely is head count.
Yeah, I agree, I do agree.
According. I think that's far the best way.
Yeah.
For ID and spring, is they classify a turkey or a chicken as a head?
Yeah, and I don't think that's.
I'm pretty sure they, I mean, turkeys, I mean, they're, they're a dog. And I think. Yeah, you trip over them.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's flawed. Aren't there?
You're talking about the ham.
Yeah. I don't know. But anyway, that's kind of where that's going, and we got our next meeting, I didn't bring my calendar in, but it was next, uh?
Tuesday, March 13th.
What is it, March?
13th.
March of 13th, 7 o'clock?
6:30.
6:30, back out of the stadium.
Yes, sir.
Well, while we're still talking about that, wasn't Kerry going to look into the legality of whether or not we can even regulate anything in the United States?
Yeah, she's going to look into that, and I guess that.
That was a big, you know.
Like, we can't regulate the waters, you know, but, you know, I, I think our regulation is, is going to be on site location.
Right.
You know?
But can we even regulate that?
Anything that, I mean, this issue keeps coming up, and based on all the answers we keep getting, and, because there's nothing in the code that says a county plan commission can or can't regulate this or that. But basically, the answer is, we can regulate things, the commissioners can, that affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. So, if it is health and welfare related, then that's an issue. And I think things like the concept of a public nuisance and odor control and, you know, odor pollution and things like that are considered health and welfare related. So, that's the basis. So, I mean, I think we just need to be cognizant of that, and I mean, certainly, she, she, I think, had previously said that was something we wanted to look into further. But that's the general answer we keep getting when we discuss this with more experienced planning people, including Bob Cormick, when, when a handful of us met with him, the professor from Purdue, or retired professor, that was kind of the general answer we got.
Well, I don't know any different, I just, you know, Kerry was saying that she was going to look into that.
And so, regardless of the number of, of animals, it's the topic that we're empowered to regulate, not?
You know, and, and, you know, in this whole process, I guess we're not trying to single out a, you know, a company or an industry, but we've got these issues that keep cropping up all the time. And they have the same denominator, you know, and it's confined feeding operations or operations that are housed, whether it's hogs, whether it's chickens, turkeys, or whatever, the building and the site location, you know, are those facilities. I don't, haven't seen anything that we have an issue with cattle feed lots, you know, and that type of nature, or that type of stuff. We don't have that. It seems like it's the building locations.
And do we necessarily have to build like a number of turkeys or chickens? Can we not just do it by the dimensions of the farm itself?
Well, that was brought up, you know, if you had a horse stable, I think one of them was brought up, if you had a horse stable, so, I would have had a luxurious horse stable. You might only have 24 horses in a big barn.
But most of your chicken houses, your turkey houses, are 500 feet long, and they're really, you know, they all fit that same, you know, they're, they're not horse facilities, they're not built anything like chicken houses, far as the dimensions, you know what I'm saying?
Head, head count is still, I, I, in my opinion, I still think that one should be in, I mean, it's, it's a very simple thing, if you've got, if you've got, you know, X number of thousands of birds in one building, you don't need to have a plan.
I think that tracks, so, I would say, you know, you made it the dimensions of the building.
Could you not do squeeze these specific?
Well, anybody, you know, anybody who raises chickens can raise them through a big row, or turkeys.
Right, right.
I mean, you're going to have to get, you can get that information somewhere. I mean, they won't give it to you.
I don't think what David was implying was, if we pick a number, if we said, okay, the minimum we're going to go with is a single turkey house, that quantity of manure, and then you calculate what that is and all the other types of livestock for us to regulate. Is that where you were going with it?
Sort of, because, you know, if you did, if you did 10,000, you know, layers, and after you put a, that on there, then have, what's that equivalent to in hogs? What's that equivalent to cattle? You'd have to step all those numbers down accordingly to that.
Right.
I still like the concept of being able to look at a head count number, because, well, usually, whenever somebody puts specs up, they're going to allow so many square feet per area, so, in the building. So, that's going to, why really want to do is try and fudge numbers and step around. I can see if you did it 40 feet wide, 500 foot building, we end up with a bunch of 499 feet built.
That's true. Yeah, people skirt that.
Yeah. So, and you know, the thing about it is, it is just as a guidance to get proper placement that's palpable to the public and to, you know, everybody, that allows the landowner to do an operation, get contract, and make a living in there, but still have some regard to our community, you know, and the neighbors around them. That's what we're trying to accomplish here. Now, Travis, we brought up some different issues, like we got a setback language from the roads, you know, that so many feet, what is it currently now?
60 from the center.
60 from the center of the county road.
County road.
That's number at home.
For a.
CFO, CAFO.
I thought your state regulation was 100 feet from the road, and 100 feet from the property line.
Yeah, I.D.'s 100 feet.
Yeah, I.D.
If they have little I.D. numbers, though, they just follow the regular distance requirement that you need for a, for a.
But, but they don't need I.D. number, you know, process.
That's what I'm saying, if they don't need the I.D. criteria for numbers to be regulated, then they can grow as close as you can to your yard.
Right, and I think we should be consistent with I.D. personally, on most kinds of things. That way, there's no confusion, you know?
Oh, yeah.
You know, oh, well, I.D. is kind of, you know, it's the same.
Well, I think that you'll find out, you can't be getting more stringent than what I.D. and regulation, you know, especially on CFO, CAFO, when we've got these people that are being paid with delight, because of, Kevin. Anything else? Anybody, Jim, you got anything else you'd like to bring up on there? Any more questions regarding that? If you find, we'll let you make remarks at the end. I'd like to go on, like Chris?
Mike?
Yeah. Well, we'll move on to new business. I put our recognized Chris DeWitt, and do you want?
Yeah, I'm Mike Yeager, I'm the one above property.
All right.
He's, he's not here.
Oh, he's not here? Do you want to go ahead and?
Yes.
And talk to us about it?
Sure.
Whenever you can, come up there a little bit further.
Okay.
To the plan commission, and then we'd like to have, you state your name and your address.
Mike Yeager, it's 13216 Columbus Avenue, as Memphis, 47943.
Okay. All right, the floor is yours, Mike.
Right. Do you want the logic that you want to be, God, right, do you?
Yeah.
They had put this property, 37 acres, and subdivision just never did anything above the property, just had to put it back, just respond.
So, what I understand that you want to do is take this from a subdivision, back to agriculture? Same thing Roger Lloyd. Right. Roger Lloyd.
Roger Lloyd.
Yeah.
Having been just gone.
Having been just gone.
Well, the taxes for now, you know.
So, this was divided up into how many 75s? 16s? How many acres, 37? And this is what you want to go back to? Okay, this is another piece of property here? All right, so you go road front?
So, nothing's been, there's been a house put on that, no evidence?
No. And this wasn't in the subdivision, this piece?
That was not, no.
Okay. So, this piece right here wasn't an original? All right, if you can? Is there a house on this piece?
There is.
Okay, what's its location? On the house?
Um, who owns this now?
Probably the owner, okay. It's not probably, it's not anybody.
No.
So, there's no approvals at all on this 37?
They just had survey, I mean, there's some space on there.
Survey.
They just, it's, oh, they have survey mark, they have survey in the property.
What township is this in?
Correctly. Let's say so. On South Austin, Eden Ridge.
All right.
Does this have to go with, if we approve it, does this have to go with the board, commission?
This is a recommendation.
We just recommend that you through the.
Is it probably all that he needs to come to, or have to refer it, is he got to come back to the board and make sure?
I, I don't know if he does, I don't, I think we just said that as an acknowledgement that we are upper now.
That's your understanding, huh? Let me, we're new to this, so bear with us.
Okay.
Item statute here, maybe just.
Your thoughts on the agriculture improvement, or what your plans, or is crops, or?
And later on, I don't know if I talk to surveyors, I'll, they direct me to them, they come out if you sold a piece off of, you know, what was required, like an acre and a half, that's how it's just, that's what I was told on that. But I have no plans for future, you know, it's for the future, if ever, if I do any of my kids have it up, or whatever, or any plans. That's why I wouldn't leave it like that, because of taxes, you know, because I don't have any plans, and you, I know it'd be a long time, and I would make it for them, you know, so, meanwhile. Yeah.
No one has purchased any.
No, no, it's all one piece. And they never did anything. I think they sold some property down the road and had another farm, you know, selling some lots off, they just writing down the roads.
Mike, it's about the same case we had with the boys.
It is, it is, and that one, we don't have to go, no, the commissioners, whether it's a plan commission and a jurisdiction that they take care of. And because you haven't sold any, there's no reason for public hearing or anything like that. It says the owners of the land in a plat may vacate all or part of that plat. All owners of the land in the plat must declare the plat to be vacated in a written instrument, which means a written document, and that the instrument must be executed, acknowledged and recorded in the same manner as the deed to the land. So basically, you've got to come up with a document that declares that the plat is vacated, and it says before you can record it, an owner must file a copy of that written document with the auditor's office and submit it for approval to this body. Okay, so, and then we, we will certify it and prepare certifications. So I don't know if.
The cause?
So I mean, what we have is a plat, and the one to be where he purchased it from Steve Almanu. But basically, there does need to be a written document, and I recall that's what we told Roger Lloyd, just to contact an attorney or come up with it himself. But basically, it's a written instrument, document declaring that the plat's vacated, and then present it to us for approval. And from what it sounds like, there's no reason not to approve it. And I, I can prepare a certification, and I've got a, a graph of one here, but I didn't have any legal description or your name or anything like that. So it's not ready, it's not something that we can sign. But there does need to be a.
Just that you have a form?
No, I, I've got a cert, there's two things. There's a written doc, a written instrument that you need to submit and file, and I can give you, I guess I can just give you my copy of the statute.
Okay.
'Cause I can print that off, you know.
Okay, same.
When I kinda judge what to do, and I kinda highlight it, you know.
Okay, what I need.
Yeah, and then, and then we will have to approve it. It ought to be presented to us in the auditor, and then it'll be recorded, but before it can be recorded, we have to certify the approval, and I'll be attached to it for it to be recorded for the auditor's office.
So what we see right now, he, you know, what he's wanting to do is very viable to do, but we have a written documentation that's been approved, okay? So we don't have an emotion here, but it looks like it's gonna be a problem if he goes ahead and do that, he gets those two documents, right?
It just, I don't know, he just needs a declaration of land's vacant.
Yeah, vacation.
Do you represent the park?
Okay.
Anybody there? You, Charlie?
Would say the title be going to be that?
Possibly. Yes, we did, I, except that's really probably priceless to all. I mean, I can ask for many, I can report his office.
Yeah, you could just re-change the rank of, to, you know, whatever, you see another one, you could probably make yourself.
That's.
Change it.
Or it'd been Roger Lloyd just before they did.
Yeah.
And I don't know that he ever did.
Oh.
The only way.
I would assume that he did, 'cause why would you not pay tax? I would hope that he did.
It was, that man was at Martinburg.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is the owners of the land, section, top section B, the owners of land in a plat that is located outside the corporate crop boundaries of the municipality may vacate all of the plat without approval. Your approval is required if no lots have been sold and no roads constructed, and all of the owners declare to be vacated in their own instrument. So we don't even have to, we don't even have to.
He owns all the lot.
Yeah.
We don't have to approve it. This, since you own all the lots, that's the section that it follows. So it's still gonna be a, we're just gonna have to give the declaration a comfortable physical.
Also, I don't have anything, you know, do I take, do I take?
To the recorder's office.
Yeah.
They have a question by the way, off the.
Do they need to, nothing, they don't, they don't?
He's just gonna record the.
That's what I'm telling you, Martin, we just, seeing it back with, you know, every type of company, right?
Yeah.
With nothing on it, crap.
Everything seems to be good. I wanted to do that, so we only left the boat on, we were thinking that you got it, you didn't order it, you know, that.
We own the whole subdivision, we've got it. That, that, that's what the bodies of management, you know, it was just.
And I just take this to the recorder's office.
Yeah.
Read through that, and if you have any questions, you may call on me.
Okay.
We know where Tom Dogg is, is too, right?
I'm right on the square, through the south way here, on Southeast Farm Square. But you're from out of town, right?
And. You got it.
We got it, yeah.
'Cause there's a big one box over, then we, they've been.
Yeah, I've encountered that, and a person ended up just dropping it because they didn't know what they approved. Which makes sense. When someone buys a lot in a subdivision, they expect the subdivision controls are gonna apply.
That happened in Berlin, dishes.
And.
Subdivision.
So it makes sense that, you know, we want to get their approval first, having it on, if something's.
Did you get it?
No, no, I got four miles away. A son of a, that's two miles from me, someone filmed, you could see it, it come from there. And they, of course, you got, got pretty close up here at Peaking Ridge.
All right, well, I think you're in order there.
Okay, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Actually, I.
Oh, 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 oh.
I'm fine.
Okay. Guys are mumbling, that's why I had to move closer.
I probably look pretty old like that for your board.
I know.
Is there any other business to be brought before us right now?
I do wanna mention that, you know, we've got Brad Shelton's seat vacant, and the composition of the plan commission is based upon whether or not we have an extension agent. And so I contacted the extension office, and they confirmed that they are in the process of concluding the search, or conducting the search to replace him. So it will be whoever the new agent is hired will be on this question. So I just wanted to do that, 'cause it's been a little while. I assumed that was the case, that we all did, but if something should change and there, and there were not a new coordinator, then the statute provides another method, method for filling that particular seat. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we're just gonna be down to eight until they finally do.
And that's what we all agreed on anyway originally.
Based on the assumption that they, yes, that's exactly what we agreed on, and I'm not sure that we have a choice. I think we all agree that that was what we were supposed to do. 'Cause as long as there's a, a extension coordinator, then that person fills that position. If not, then the board appoints someone. But the last thing, we didn't want to.
That's right.
Appoint someone and then have removals, hire someone, that wasn't, that didn't seem.
We interviewed, we done an interview last week for candidates, and then they will send three candidates to the, Washington, Washington, Kansas.
Right.
To pick one out of three.
I didn't know how many they were narrowing it down to, I think so.
So this was the, this was the second instance lately where somebody's converted.
Roger Lloyd, then, then the first one, not off, and they, that one first, what, in the, in the other hand, and.
I'm just crushed, 'cause that's happening.
Yeah.
And there's seven for less than a D F O.
Oh. Oh, that really makes me think.
You can blank that part out.
No, no, I can't. I'll just slice it and put it on YouTube, okay?
Hey, Tom, you didn't happen to get that dude's address in any way, did you?
He's got, he's.
You left his word to be.
Yeah.
I think it's a copy.
That might be his only copy of it.
That's not likely, we're going, I sent them to me.
Maybe he'll be counted to the recorder's office, he'll probably have a question, we might give him the ring.
I don't have a, I don't have his number.
Mike Yeager.
Mike Yeager.
When was the next meeting, Carrie, when did you say?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Okay, now who can go to that as far as?
We only had five, didn't we, Max?
Yeah.
I mean, if we ask, I guess who's gonna be there as far as, and to have a forum?
Ross.
Well, you can, you're advertising it, right?
Yeah.
Did we, are we advertising that?
I believe that was the case, because you did consider the possibility of having a forum there.
Especially at first meeting, I think.
Well, Marcia asked me about it afterwards, so, I mean, she knew. So you guys had advertised it somewhat anyway.
Yeah, do you remember Travis, what we did at that last committee?
Uh, I just posted it.
Posted it, that's.
Yeah, that's.
Well, it's posted, yeah, it's still.
That's not advertising, but.
Right.
Well, it's still legitimate, though, I mean, to, as long as it's posted, saying two days prior that you're gonna.
Yeah, it's forty-eight hours is all you have to do.
For the purpose of collecting information and whatever.
We'll just do that. We'll just post two days before Travis.
Or, you know, you can post, post it online, and then, you know, but that's the minimum.
Yeah, okay.
So it's here, March thirteenth?
No, it's, it's extension office.
Extension office.
Same room, same room, major.
Six thirty.
I thought we had a key again.
We will, okay, good. Mary Carrie, Carrie wasn't feeling very good that night. She stumbled and busted her knee, and everything else was having a real bad day coming in there, so. Anyway, hopefully she'll have a map. Something for story to live on there. I might get you this scoring, this is a scoring system right there. I, I talked to the people in Rush County, and they like it, because it, it just, it just seems like it gets lying around, works out before it ever comes up.
It's a easier flowing operation to go that way than it was.
When I talk to people in Rush County, they says it seems to be working. Nobody asks for the forms about, they know the criteria, they know the rules, and they can just walk them right to self, to the system, to see if they got enough points. The only time is, is if they score a lot, and then they come in there and say, well, I want, filter, you know, green filter, and give you more points, and there's, it seems to work. I don't think we want to walk everybody through a site placement, I think we want to allow that they work down before it ever gets to you. I know Travis does. Travis, you got any comments as far as the different, a couple of inquiries you add on the buildings? Some of the things that you see as potentials, problems or questions that they have?
Well, just, the only thing to really come up is the definition of what, on your setbacks, what makes sense? What is our definition of an office? What is our definition of a school on our setbacks?
'Cause these get all these rules too.
It's a good point. You could have home daycares, that people call preschools. I mean, I, that's something that, that's always occurred to me. I just thought I'd throw that out there.
I understand.
That's something we need to be considering in the subcommittee.
There are several home schools out, eight, eight down here, I know now.
Well, probably be a good idea, is whether you do get a lot of, you have childrens, that's.
Definition of places.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You gotta just lay right out what you is just.
Oh, it's going to.
Yeah.
It's going, that's part of what you.
Yeah.
Discussion.
Okay.
I have one more item.
All right, Tom.
Regarding these books, I had, I had presented these and asked people if they wanted to order one. It's the two thousand eleven Indiana plane consuming laws annotated, and I had five people that night say they wanted them, and those were Jeff Sauter, Shawna, Adam Kelly, Max, Eric Rusk. Subscore, I got three more now, Scott Mile, Lake Fire, Virginia today. I, it's, I'm not ordered those, I second set of three.
I don't give them yet.
Right, because I'm afraid Jeff Sauter might not have this. So, let me hold on to them.
Okay.
'Cause I've got two.
Mine I called, man, 'cause I didn't own it that night, I called him.
And I know Adam Kelly doesn't have his yet, and I think, so the other one I think is Jeff Sauter's, but he's not here. So is there anyone else besides Scott who's in gym? Now, I've got money from two of you, and then Scott will pay me later, I'm sure.
No worries.
So, and also, I apologize, last time I announced it was twenty-five dollars, and it is, except on the form, it does say there's a five dollar per book shipping and handling fee, so.
Thirty dollars.
I got an additional five dollars from everybody except a couple, and that's Eric and Adam. So maybe, it's, it's just a dollar, but that's.
Okay.
So it'll be thirty to you, and these two just be, so anyone else who wants one?
Can you drop your check by the office, or are you at the next meeting, or how do you all have a lot?
Um, I prefer Buffalo Nichols, but.
You're right.
Yeah, if you, if you wanna just drop it in the mail and mail it in, or if you're having to be by my office or anything, that's fine, 'cause I'll just put it on my firm credit card, and then, and then I'll collect, I've not deposited the first set of checks yet, so.
Okay. Right.
You deposit them in the killing, the I D M account?
John?
Question to Travis, I'm totally different subject. With this tornado, I'm just kinda wondering how you're gonna handle, you know, what do we have on that as far as ordinances? I mean, if someone replaces a mobile home with another mobile home, 'cause then we get, you're gonna have a lot of stuff planned and repairs very soon. And, um, we don't really have aging concerns like that, but we do have construction standards that they have to follow.
All homes have to be vacated.
Is there any concerns you have about that, or that you want a voice about, you know, if you come up there? There, there was like, my understanding, I don't know, twenty-five mobile homes that would destroy.
You might get some mobile homes being set as well as a temporary dwelling, and kind of hopes to be repaired and rebuilt. Also, might be an issue too.
That's true.
You're just gonna have.
They've already got electricity, so it's like, I mean, so it's not like they can't get permanent electricity.
Yeah, you're just gonna have all different kinda circumstances, and I was down in the Peaking area today with the health department, and, you know, I was down there Saturday also, and I'm just kinda, we're just. I'm just kinda, we're just kinda waiting it out here a little bit and just, just seeing what kinda, you know, what kinda, you know, what kind of bridges we're gonna have to cross, I, we've not had something this, this big.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You know, we're just gonna have to try to figure out what the needs are, I, you know.
Cause I mean, you've had problems, remember before you called me about someone wanting to skirt a little bit on the requirements because of, what was there before, like, you know.
Yeah, you're just, yeah, you're gonna have to figure out, you know, what do you wanna do about temporary permits, um, that's, you know, that's probably number one right there, that'll come up.
They've declared a federal disaster area, correct? Which means that their people surely qualify for FEMA.
You mean the furnace, thermal line?
I think it's also been declared a federal disaster area, hasn't it? It was a federal state of emergency that night, but somebody down there Saturday or Sunday, I was down there volunteering most of the weekend, selling stuff off people's houses and stuff, and there was talk about it being declared a federal disaster area. So they think it's federal aid, which would mean they'd be qualified for FEMA housing. Which you know, they have those FEMA trailers, you know, they bring in temporary housing for people and so forth and so on, um, those things are, uh, you know, obviously not permanent living, and you, and they don't, they don't give them to you, they, I think they take them back and, you know, and.
That's why they, they lose them, cause I, I know a guy, he hauled, dug a lot of them down and jerked them back.
Yeah, they've got a parking deal down there everywhere if they use the air, um, but, uh, you know, I don't know if that happens, if, you know, that would simplify things, you know, if people try to rent their own temporary housing or what.
So, when does it, when does it not become temporary housing?
Well, they are never permanent, cause you don't know them, if they get, if FEMA brings housing in. Um, if people get temporary permits to put regular mobile homes in there, I don't know what the, I don't, I don't know what, what are they doing for them, temporary.
That's the thing you're gonna have, I mean, there's, it's gonna be interesting, I don't even know how, how.
In your book, it says if it's over nine hundred and fifty square feet, it takes, you have to allow them to put them in wherever you can put a, a home in.
Right.
And that's gonna take care of a lot of the newer stuff, I mean, you're not gonna see very many twelve by sixties anymore, you know, the nineteen sixty-six model's showing up. But it says like eighty-one and after, that you have to consider them, if they're a big enough home, or they gotta be considered, allowed to go back on their home site where they was before, if they meet that criteria?
One thing to consider as far as temporary, is nobody's gonna put their mobile homes where their house was, if it's gonna be temporary. If you couldn't build the house there, if your mobile home is sitting there, you know, it would have to be somewhere else. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but.
But, you know, I mean, they, if they put it there, they're obviously going to take them to live there, is what I would say.
Their houses, that's what I would have to keep it in there. Do you probably have a situation where people are in low pay for building something?
That could be too, that wouldn't drive it yourself, they couldn't, you know, that's like too, that's like. I mean, it also, if you look at it as a case that pays basis.
How many, how many, how many families are we talking about? Well.
I have no idea.
No idea, are we talking about a hundred families, or are we talking about?
Washington County?
No, I don't think it's a hundred, I think it's up to, like, a lot of residents, it's just, I was thinking it was supposed to, forty homes destroyed, um, and.
I've heard sixty-seven, sixty-seven residences, whether that's.
Sixty-seven.
Or what, I don't know, whether that's right or wrong, I can't prove it, but that's what they tell us. Yeah, that was destroyed.
I was gonna say, it's gotta be over sixty, cause there's like forty residences right there, I'm Jordan, I mean, it's just, it's too fast.
Okay, so, so about eighty, let's just say eighty, for, you know, it can go either way, but that's a good idea, that there's, there's about eighty residences that are going, that are going to need to be replaced or something else is going to happen. Um, a lot of the families, I think what they said today was that the shelter was kind of empty, there were very few people that needed it because everybody had family and were living with family. That may tie into that too, somebody's not gonna go get a trailer and live in a trailer if they can live with Aunt Mabel, you know? So, that may also be a part of what's going to happen.
A lot of the, I don't know about other areas in Washington County, but there were some trailers I drove by.
Right.
But there was a lot of nice houses.
A lot of nice homes on there.
And they, you, darling children, they're gonna leave most of the people on those ones, I mean, for being, for being, they're not gonna put a, drag a mobile home back in there because they're twenty, thirty thousand dollars.
I think where Travis's dilemma is, is that if he's got something that is put in that says it's temporary and it ends up being permanent. So, what kind of recourse do you have?
Well, what is the criteria of temporary, the best kind of time to declare something that would be temporary, is temporary, you know?
I feel we don't have anything written, you know?
Yeah, well, you should think that a mobile home that's private could do that.
Yeah, well, unless it falls under a federal program, and I bet they've got special rules that they'll follow, if there's, I don't know this to be the case, but I can only imagine in a case like when you look at Louisiana from Katrina, I mean, when you, you've got this massive of a problem, there's gonna be a temporary federal aid situation where they're brought in, people are given temporary housing while the problem's, and, and that aid is gonna come, coming with that aid is gonna be a, a set of regulations, I think, some guidelines or rules on how this is gonna go. And, and I don't know that we are or aren't to declare a federal disaster area, I don't, I don't.
I don't know if we declared one either, but there was talk about.
So, you know, this is Washington County and I, I don't, I mean, I don't know where we are on that, I, I think the emergency management office would probably be, the sheriff's department probably knows much as anybody about where that goes, but I mean, right now, the same rules are gonna apply, if someone starts to replace something, it's gonna have to go to the health department first, make sure that there's a proper septic and then they'll go through the permitting process.
What's the health department's thoughts on this?
About, about the same, they're just, you know, they.
Play it by ear and see what happens.
Yeah, they've not, you know, they've not had any requests yet. And we're just trying to kinda get ahead of the game here a little bit. They don't really know, they're just kinda waiting it out and see.
Well, um, somewhere, there's got to be some kind of language about temporary, a mobile home for temporary use.
Your, your meetings with FEMA so far, they gave you criteria as far as reimmersment?
No, not even that, just basic, just, we're so more barely into this, you know, what FEMA's gonna do, and actually wasn't FEMA's, it's, it's, you know, part of almost two.
Okay.
So, it's totally good. So, I don't know, I just, I just know that, um, Travis has come to me before the cases where somebody had a mobile home there that they would want to set the other one up, just like, remember that one that we built around, and what was the situation there that? It exists, well, they just. Some said it didn't comply. The foundation. Foundation wasn't, but it was, since it was moved there for thirty years, we let them get by, you know, if they technically would've gotten those, or. There wasn't damage to the footers and, you know, the site work was, was good, so, you know. But I don't know if people are gonna be, you know, wanting you to, when they replace something to, and hopefully they'll have insurance, that's, that, if they have insurance, it's not, I don't want it to be an issue.
Yeah, well, because most of them, if something is exposed, they'll.
They'll have, they'll have some, but, so we'll just, you know, maybe it's not gonna be an issue, you know? I just wanna bring it up. Well, what, what I bumped into is there's companies out there, and, and it's been a while, that deal in temporary housing, but it has nothing to do with FEMA trailers or anything like that, but then once the temporary housing comes in, you know, when I talked, you know, when I talked with them, it was just gonna be a temporary situation, a home would be out of there in six months. Well, after six months went by, all of a sudden they had a payment plan with a company and it wasn't a, it wasn't temporary housing anymore, and it turned into a a situation where it wasn't gonna be moved out.
So that's why you go in there and say, well, when you need to clean the footers, that's gonna be there.
Right.
That's about the only thing I can say.
It took, it, it just took a long time, but it.
Yeah.
You know, we have had some situations that are foreseeable where someone gets some kind of a damage, whether it's a smoke damage or a, uh, lead-based paint situation where it's gotta be remedied, or a, uh, what's another one, a common one?
Spacers.
Sometimes people will temporarily set up living quarters right next door while they remedy the situation of their house, and I, I don't know that we really have anything to address that either, but it's one of those things that doesn't come up often enough and isn't a big problem and I don't think that's just.
Just see it with a fire burnout, something like that.
Yeah, it's just something we've never had to address, it's never really been an issue because people, it really is, they have temporary quarters while they do that and then they're along the, we use less, the homes are stored.
Sounds like we're gonna be obtaining more information, and we're gonna be in a process and have a learning curve here with the disaster. With that, we need to be taking a look at some things, I think one thing that we all should be concerned about is the health and welfare to get some type of housing and and cover for those people that, I would hate to be in their position. We've gotta be conscientious and humane about how we apply and leave, leave some leniency in there. But also in the same way, we need to be looking in the future to still have safe housing for those people in the future, understanding that temporary circumstances are temporary circumstances till we can remedy or do a long-term solution, so. With that, I think we're gonna have a learning curve here.
I've got a question. Um, Tom, what do you think about the legality of this idea? And it'd be something I, I think commissioners would have to do. Or, I don't even know, I don't even know if we could do it at all, but could we have a waiver of some kind? Would the county have a waiver, you know, Travis had one, that says, you know, if somebody wants this, you know, I'm, I'm getting this trailer removed and everything, but, you know, it's just gotta get something fixed up and, you know, everything.
And I think that's something we probably, yeah, I think that's possible, temporary, temporary waiver.
Exactly, temporary, if you fill this out, that guarantees that you are gonna have such and such a time to complete your building project, you know, or then this is going to be considered, and he, when he signs it, he signs it, he's agreeing that if it is still there, it is going to be considered permanent, and he will need to follow the rules and regulations set forth, you know, for permanent. See what I'm saying? And by, basically by signing, signing it, he, you, you, by him signing it so that he doesn't have to jump through any hoops to put the trailer in there, it's not like foundations and, you know.
Well, no, I don't, I don't, I think we need to be careful there, or differently, because from a safety standpoint, what we don't wanna do is just waive all safety.
Not all safety, but.
I mean, yeah, I mean, is it possible, I, I think it is, I think it's absolutely possible, it's hard, it's hard to rule, we can.
I mean, we don't have, like, an ordinance for that, like, okay.
No, but I think what we need to do, honestly, like our president said, is, but let's kinda wait and see what happens and if anyone's even requesting it. Cause it's kinda like with the emergency shelter, everybody's kind of taking up temporary residence with friends and family, and this may be something, we may be sitting here discussing something that's not even, that never becomes an issue. And maybe we're not, but I, I think if it does become an issue, we need to wait until someone presents us with a situation, because we're trying to come up with hypothetical scenarios that may or may not ever exist, it's easier to address a situation that really arises than it is to try to anticipate what might be, and I think there's something we said about anticipating, that's what, like the planning mission, if we're trying to.
But there's plenty of the influx of some kind of housing that Travis is gonna have to do, we know that.
Well, I, but we've got the, just like, we've got these just same rules, so if you place in a home, the same rule for building it the second time is gonna be in place to build it the first time.
It's regular.
I mean, that's, that's, that's not the issue, you're right, there's gonna be an influx, but it's gonna be like any other.
Right, that's, yeah.
I mean, we don't, there's not a new set of rules.
That's not the problem.
It's regular permanent housing all week.
It's just, I mean, it's, it's gonna be permitted and all that, you know, people turn in their insurance, the contractor will be hired, and, and the same process that we'd normally go through, it's just, his office will be a lot busier.
Cause that's, you know, that's what we kinda came up, you know, when I talked to the health department, we were just kinda waiting to see what people's needs are, you know, cause it's not like there's gonna be eight people, you know, at your doorstep tomorrow, you know, I mean, it's, you know.
You're just looking at the ones that didn't have insurance, is what, before this, we may have some issues, you know?
And that's only if they come up and ask and say, hey.
Sure. Is there any other business, uh, audience, any comments, Max, product?
You go ahead, no, you go, I'm gonna write here for a second, go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, the only thing I had, uh, really was I was concerned about the reciprocal setback, which we've talked about in another meeting thing, and that's where I still have a hard time, if you can buy seven acres with two chicken houses on it, like, like Jimmy Eldon chopped off his acreage and just sold his two houses, that if you have the reciprocal setback, that controls eight acres to the left and eight acres to the right and twelve acres across the road, that those landowners, under no fault of their own, gonna lose their rights to build on because the reciprocal setback prevents them from doing with their property what they wanted to do. Yet at the same time, if the owner of those houses will buy it, they can build across the road, so it's, there's nothing wrong with the ground technically, it's just who owns the ground. And I have a, a, a hard time with that, but it's a, it's not what it is, it's who you are coming into play.
Do you think the reciprocal setback's always a wrong way to go?
Yes, I do, I think there, well, I think you can have, like we talked about in the meeting before though, uh, you can have where you have to sign saying, I know this is what's here across the road from me, but I still choose to go ahead and build here. And I'm not, you know, under normal circumstances, if he's not splattering the side of my house or doing something crazy you ain't supposed to be doing, you know, what I get with if I'm upwind or downwind is my own, of my own making.
So, if he, if they were to wanna build a house across from it,
Mm-hmm.
if they were by, well, I say reciprocal, that they might not be able to?
Yeah, that's my understanding, that you.
But what if they, what if they go in there and they agree in their deed in that, with the agreement, with the existing facility, that says that they can't? Cause that would be like a variance only in a different direction, you know, if that's for the house.
Yeah.
That would be tied to the title of the property, saying that you acknowledge that there's a CFO or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I can, yeah, I, I agree with that, but the landowner has the right to say, I still wanna build there. It's my property, I paid taxes on it, I still wanna build there, I shouldn't have to come and ask for permission from the CFO to build on property that I've owned and paid taxes on for thirty years.
So, what is this reciprocal setback then, is it that if, if a chicken house is there, or a CAO is there, and it meets the setback requirements at the time it's built, that you can't build anything within those setbacks?
Right, that's, right, the, the, the ordinance is currently worded relative to a, um. Right, that's, right, the ordinance is currently worded relative to a CFO wanting to go in where there might be residences out here, and we'll make sure they're 70 feet from the residence or from the school, from the obstacle. But let's just deal with residences. The question is, what if it's already existing, the neighboring farmer wants to sell off certain parcels of land, and people want to buy them, and they're within 750 feet or whatever the setback is, and they want to build a house there? I think we, before we can answer that question today, I think there's a lot to consider. Like, is that setback really solely for the protection of the homeowner? And is odor really all we're worried about? Is there also a concern about protection for the farmer? Because I think you'll get some farmers, some.
I want a reverse setback.
Well, at the same time, the farmer has the exemption where he can, he can build closer to the facility than the landowner. He don't have that 750-foot restriction, he can build 100 feet from it. Or like Shawna's, like, less than 200 feet from it. And she has no problem in 200 feet from her operation. And she has, she's allowed to build across the road if you own that ground in that 750-foot setback dimension, but you're saying that nobody else should be able to build there? You're saying the individual is the one who has the right to build, not the, the property's, uh, the validity of the property?
The owner, the owner has, it would be within inches of.
That's exactly right. But if it's not a Health and Human Services reason, that the owner can live there and let his kids go to school and take whatever, you know, if you're actually concerned about a disease or something because they're too close to the facility, the owner's kids go to school out here with these other kids, and there's no problem with it. So how do you justify that it's for health reasons or human safety that the owner's kid can live right beside it, but somebody 750, 7 across the road can't, can't live there?
I don't think it's communicable, I mean, the example you gave is communicable diseases and kids taking things to school, and I don't know that that's an issue.
Well, okay, I'm not saying it is, but I mean, you've got to justify your ordinances as being for health and safety reasons, whatever. Well, if their kids can live there, how does that, how do you justify that your kids can't live there for health and safety reasons?
I feel the general welfare.
It's the health, safety, general welfare. And the general welfare includes such things as noise and odors and, well, basically, noise and odors. And then sometimes you're going to get, with certain types of operations, flies and insects that wouldn't otherwise exist above for the fact that you've got confined livestock of some sort there.
Well, that's correct, but if the guy that owns the place across the road, before you move into it, knows it's there and still wants to build there, he, has he not got the same right to waive the, the worry about flies as the CFO owner?
Well, yeah, I hear you, and I think that's, previously in my minutes, I thought your concern was always that you do, you wanted reciprocal setbacks, because if someone's going to regulate, then.
No, sir. Now, I'm, I'm saying, like where my ground is, I lose, I've, I've got a skinny patch. My place is a triangle patch, and you take 650, 650 feet back, or 750 from 100 feet back off the road, you take out all my road fronties. I lose the right to build on my road fronties, but somebody else could build there.
And I, I think that's an issue that needs to be, I agree with you. It's an issue that needs to be addressed.
And I don't have a problem signing and saying, I know you're over there. But I want the right to be able to build on my ground just the same as you do yours. It's not fair to say, I'll buy seven acres and buy, and put these two houses on here, and I control a 40-acre circle, or a 47-acre circle. Not just my seven, but the.
I think the variance allows that to happen. And that, you know, it's kind of unusual whenever we look at zoning ordinances and stuff like that. You look at it to a certain degree in there as far as protecting an industrial area or residential area, where actually, it's not, it, 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 it does a comprehension of agriculture, residence, and industry, all encompasses, has a certain amount of protection. So, you know, the reverse setbacks is actually a protection from integration of that cluster to the complex, which will create more nuisances or more complaints in there. That's where, that if you're in an agriculture area, and there's CFO or CAFO, and you want to build closer than what the setback language is, then you're going to have to come, just as if he were to want to build closer to a residence, which he might be denied, have to ask for a variance. But that's just because of where you're at. You know, if you're in an agriculture area, they have CAFOs or CFOs. If you want to build a house closer than what the setbacks are, then you're going to have to ask for a variance that's going to have to be tied to the deed.
And I, I understand where you're coming from, Max, and I tend to agree. But that could get so legal. That would have to be really carefully included in the deed of a piece of property to cover successors. Because I saw some real stupid stuff happen in Floyd County over Andrew's junkyard. Y'all probably read about it. Some guy made, made a deal with the owner of Andrew's junkyard, been there 40 years. Some guy wanted to build a big fancy house adjacent to the junkyard. Junkyard owner did the excavation for him, helped him out. And then, as soon as the guy got the house built, he spent years trying to drive the junkyard out.
I see, it, it was his own subdivision there? I do business with one of those farmers there. And he says that he's in that, that subdivision, he's doing great, and he has a hog house. His hog house is ready for, well, he's one of the last farmers in that area. He said, we make this out there. Because, you know, he was there first, but I think with the subdivision, if they want to know, that's the problem we, we can't really do.
But with the sign, the waiver like Max is talking about, that's what the content of the waiver is. You waive the right and all success is future owners, you waive right to complain. I think we also need to hear from the industry, though, and see, because it's my understanding that some of this setback is for the protection of the farmer too. Because if we don't have reciprocals, would you want someone building around? Would they want 40, 40 houses going in and around them? And making that a residential, and that'll affect taxes, I would think. That would affect, um, the noise and the disruption of their farm is a concern, I think, as well. And of course, I own a farm, but that's, I, I think that the disruption to the farm was also.
And that's a whole case of the reciprocal. You know, if it's good this direction, it's good this direction too.
To me, that's the only logical way to do it. And if you want to make an exception, then you're going to have to kind of present your case.
Well, also, consider also that maybe you should own the dead zone. So if there is a setback, that you should own that property so that you do have full control over it. You know, because, you know, it's like mineral rights. When you do something like that, when you do build a business like that, where it does have a setback, then you're taking an asset away from the community around you, if you do have setbacks. Do you understand?
Right, you're taking control of someone else's ground.
That's exactly right. And so if you.
If you need that much reciprocal, then buy them setback another 12 acres into the field further. Let them, let, let you go ahead and use, instead of the seven acres, put it in the middle of your 40-acre farm.
No, once, once you have the rules, though, you know, it's, it's, you, you see what I'm saying?
This is all stuff we need to get hashed out.
That's exactly right.
Well, they hashed out before you get it in place. Then everybody can live by the rules, but the one who's already there.
That's the reason why I challenge the, you know, is the 750 a correct, correct? Because if you look at reciprocals, just in your case, Max, that affects a bigger piece of your property.
47 acres.
Yeah, not, not, not only, the, the, the guy at the CFO, you know, with his, but it also affects you, the 750, because if it's reciprocal, it affects you a bigger area of your ownership than what a 500 would.
You know what we might consider, because there is also a property line setback and a residential setback. There's two. And what we might need to do is adjust those so that the property line setback.
Well, the reciprocal stops at the property line. And that way, if the farmer feels he needs more, then he needs to buy the four acres across the road or 20 acres across the road or whatever it takes to get his safety that he thinks he needs. Otherwise, there's a property line, yeah. And I could understand that, I mean, that's.
Well, and then, and then treat, treat the, the setback, treat it like mineral rights. You know, and say, look, this is an asset as part of your, your property. And you can have long-term leasing or something similar of that nature, but make, put a number on it. Put a number on it, because that, that really does, you know, once you go ahead and settle them, this is actually what it is. That you have, you are leasing, if you build a CAFO, and you say, okay, it's, I need like an acre or two or whatever to, to finish out the, the setback, you know, go ahead and have a long-term lease. You know, 30 years, or 10, or 20, or whatever, the life of the, because the chicken houses have lives too. But, uh, and say, this is, you know, I'm, I'm willing to pay you this amount, for this amount of time, to have the setback. You know, and just like a rental property or something similar of that nature. But, but consider the, the setback an asset, not just something that is, is common to the community, but per the property owner, and kind of like a, a second layer. Otherwise, have them own the setback, own, own the dead zone. And so that way, you can kind of like, you know, work with it that way.
These are all things I think need to be hashed out, and I do think there needs to be industry representation. Because I want to hear, do they have concerns about the whole setback issue? And what if, because you're, you're thinking of one scenario, like with your property. And you've got to think about, okay, are there other scenarios where if, would, would we want a whole bunch of people to come in and buy all the land around you, like I said, and waive that requirement, and does that affect the farmer? And we're not just talking about an individual homeowner's right who might want to build a house. I mean, the concept of a variance on a single situation is kind of appealing to address those situations, just understanding that, you know, we would be very, you know, that we have to trust that the process works and that if it makes sense, it makes sense. But I also think we need to be careful about, in a general meeting like this, coming up with general rules.
And I think that's part of our subcommittee in there, is to bring these issues and hash them out and throw something out there, and see one has nothing to. The map should be enlightening to us what 750 really means.
Speaking of the map, I was going to ask a question. Should the commission contact Carrie and make sure that that's going to be ready for the 13th?
Yeah, I will, I'll, I'll give her a call. I'm going to call her and tell her how this meeting went in there. But I, she asked if she needed to be at this meeting, and I thought, we thought that with the information, we could inform where you're at, but if she's supposed to, we could talk then. You know, we do need the maps, we need to be looking at them.
I think it'd be pretty enlightening to look at the maps with the 750-foot circles on it.
Is there any other business needs to be brought forward, Ron did, do you have any more comments?
I have, I have two things.
Okay.
Um, Awareness Washington County is doing leadership facilitation training. Now, this is the only opportunity that you're going to have to be able to take this class. It starts on March 13th, it's on Tuesday nights. They're going to go ahead and wiggle around on the, the schedule to try to include candidates. Uh, some of the nights fell on, like, the debates, and, you know, they wouldn't take it. But it's going to, to train you how to run a meeting, how to include information, how to, uh, really be able to not only do this for the boards that you're on, but actually train other boards to do this. And it's a very urgent need in our community to be able to do this. I think, um, people take a kind of a, you know, a blasé kind of attitude about it. It's like, well, you know, they do it, I can do it, I do fine, or, or that kind of thing. There's, uh, and that may not necessarily be a bad thing. I mean, you know, people, people may not be doing it badly or, or that kind of thing. This has been a very good meeting, it's very structured. But other meetings aren't. And, uh, anyway, the Awareness Washington County is, is producing these. This will be your last chance. It's Tuesday nights, 5:30 to 9 o'clock, meal is included, it's $100. And this may be our only last chance to be able to take something like this or have people come out of this to help other boards to facilitate. Ian's taking it, my oldest, he's wanting to work with churches. He actually paid me money to do it, which is pretty astounding for an 18-year-old. Also, April 5th, I've already scheduled, uh, through Indiana Proud, an open-door law seminar. Okay, this is going to be held at Pekin from 6:30 until 8:30. Uh, we have the counselor coming down from Indianapolis. Either it's going to be Katie, who we had last time, or Joseph Hoag, okay? They'll go over, you can actually ask them questions, and they'll bring down information for any particular meeting or board that you're on, and ask specific questions. The laws are changing. Where you can be held, I, I don't know if it's passed or not, but they were trying to get it to be held that if you did break the law, that you would be personally liable for like a fine of $100 for the first time, and then, you know, 500 for the next. So they're really trying to stomp down on that, so that may take money out of your personal pocket. It would be good not only to brush up on that information and ask about current information, this is just an opportunity.
What time is that? 6:30, 8:30?
6:30, 8:30 at the Shelter House in Pekin.
That's going to be similar, maybe some new information that you had at Campbell'sburg.
Right, I mean, and, and something too, that if you have questions, ask them beforehand, and they'll bring that information down.
I want to, some of us attended the one in Campbell'sburg, Ron hosted it, and I, at first, was disappointed that the actual public access counselor didn't appear. But Katie was there, I forget her last name.
Uh, Riles Williams, she just gotten married.
Well, it was an excellent, excellent program, and honest to be commended, it was a good facility. There was question answers afterwards, and she was exceptionally well-spoken in front of the people. I mean, you guys, I was very impressed with her. And she did as well as anybody could do, I think, presenting to a foreign crowd, people who don't know. And then fielding questions, she was very knowledgeable, she was knowledgeable as you could ask anyone to interview about the topics. And it just gives a very informative, good seminar, and the materials handed out for free.
Right.
So I, I encourage anyone to attend. If you want to go in more at all.
Yeah, it was, it was very interesting. And I'm going to try to get, not just from our county, but a lot of other county government people have asked to attend. And so we're going to see if I can't get the tri-county situation going. So it might also be a nice place to go ahead and meet, you know, strange people, you know. Might be for them too.
I, I was going to say, I want you to say it.
Be for them too. So, but no, you're encouraged, just let me know if you're coming. I want to keep it to around 20 to 30 people again. And, uh, because, and then you can ask questions beforehand. If you don't want to ask questions in front of somebody, or in front of the camera, or whatever you want to do, um, the contact information will be there. They're very kind.
And Katie can sit around afterwards and answer questions after the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Very, very, very helpful.
Thank you, Ron. Anything else? If not, I'm looking for a motion too.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Thank you. Adam, stand up. Thank you very much, Wayne Commission, thank you. In attendance, Travis heads up. You had a minute?
Good luck with everything, I have to get up at 3:30, I'm going home.
Go home, go home.
3:30 every day.
We have two or three days a week.
I have two. I have things to feel like.
All right, you do.
Okay, next one.
They're not the final draft, doesn't, doesn't have the main, the main practical changes that we need. The point is, it's pretty much, I had an extra mission here.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, now we have to.
Well, you know, the thing about the seven fifty compared to the five hundred, just take those two numbers. And of course, we heard the remark, you know, just use this remark, dead, we really just don't want wasted ground, just, you know.
The worst thing that you waste.
Well, that's true.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that's, and that's, that's why I think the property line setback.
Yeah, see ya.
Take it easy.
But it's the residence setback. I think it could be same setback. I mean, that's one way to make sure that if you're wasting ground, it's your ground. You know, if that's what you wanna do with your time, that's not. But if you're closing the setback and somebody else's ground.
Yeah.
You know, I think if, if the neighbor could build on that setback by signing a waiver.
Well, it not only, it's not only what the current operation is, say that you've got a, uh...